I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the January 26th County Commission Meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter in the white folder. And if you need assistance with a listening device, Robert is in the front row and he can help you with that. We'll move on with routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approval of the county commission meeting minutes from January 19th, 2016.
So move, second.
A motion and a second. Any corrections? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $631,321.24. Is there a motion?
Pay the bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Barth?
Today's bills include $220,000 to armor correctional health. So that's, that's a big chunk.
Thank you. Did we, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. There are none. Item number five is personnel action. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel action. Is there a motion?
Second.
Any questions for Carrie on routine? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number B is consider a motion to update the county drug and alcohol testing procedures manual. Carrie Dever, good morning.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. The county has a drug and alcohol procedures manual that guides when we drug or alcohol test our employees. And that applies for all staff, both DOT and non-DOT. Recently, the Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration updated their guidelines on or requirements for drug testing rates and they reduced them from 50% to 25%. So there's two changes in front of you today. One is to reflect this new change for our own testing rates and lower our testing rates for drugs from 50% to 25% for DOT random testing processes. The second change mirrors a practice that we've had in place but didn't actually include in our procedures manual. Right now, if an individual is involved in an accident, a serious accident, or a serious safety violation, we would require that they not come back to work until the results of the drug testing or alcohol testing are received. But we don't have that in our policies manual right now, so we're asking for your approval of those two items to include them.
Okay. Is there any questions for Carrie on these changes? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number C is a special action, approval of a salary increase. Carrie Dever.
Carol was hired as our commission administrative officer on July 15th. Because of the level of the position, the commission chose to do a performance review after that six months. The action in front of you today is to approve a one-step salary increase for Carol from 2610 to 2611.
Any questions on that? All in favor, oh, excuse me, I need a motion. I have a motion.
Sign it.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number D is a special commission action to hire an attorney for the public defender's office.
Noticed in your routine actions that Amber Egert's resignation was listed effective January 22nd. You might also recall that we currently have a policy that requires a 13-week break in service between full-time and part-time employment if somebody wants to transition to a part-time role. That requirement is there for Affordable Care Act purposes. We're asking for your exception to that policy to allow Amber to come back for employment in the month of February only to help with caseloads for the public defender's office. She'll be working less than 20 hours a week.
Okay. Is there any questions for Carrie on this one? Commissioner Kelly?
I just have one. Was this an unexpected change or had they known about it for several months?
It was, the individual gave appropriate amount of notice of her resignation, but I don't believe there was any, any advance notice that she would be leaving.
I mean, I understand the purpose of this is so she can wrap up cases that she's got right now, is that...
That's correct. That's correct. But the PDO currently has two vacancies. So in trying to manage that caseload, this was one quickie, easy way to allow the person to work just 10, maybe, I think they're really anticipating 10 hours a week just to close up some of those files. So we're grateful to Amber for her willingness to do that when she's moving on to a new position. A good way for the department to address workload issues in the short term without really much financial implication.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
Just a comment, Madam Chair. I think we did something similar in the Public Advocates Office when we kept Ms. Howard on after her resignation to wrap up some things.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval, second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Oh, excuse me.
I was...
Oh, you are, you aye, okay.
I was a late aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number six is applications for abatement. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Notices, item A is a notice from the South Dakota Department of Environment and Natural Resources for proposed renewal of a general air quality operating permit for concrete plants operating in South Dakota. Item B is authorize the county auditor to publish notice to bidders in, for rehabilitation of a bridge structure number 50-192-040 located on Highway 110 spanning the Big Sioux River. Bridge structure 10-241-0880 located on Highway 118 spanning Slip Rock Creek. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number C is authorize the county auditor to publish notice to bidders for MC Chip Seal 2016 Annual Chip Seal Contract.
Make a motion to...
A motion and a second. Are there any questions on that? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number D is authorize the county auditor to publish notice to bidders for software implementation services for Enterprise Resource Planning Software System. Carol Muller.
I'm just here to answer any questions you all may have, recognizing that this is a very significant project for the county. We have been planning for it for two years to update and look at a whole new process for the county in terms of the financials and all the tangents that go into that. So this is the RFP today. We've been working with Barry Dunn, Monty Wanamack, and Kim Adamson. And I have been working with them closely and ensuring that this has covered everything. We have had legal go through that. We appreciate Kirsten doing that. So just here to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions?
Carol, it's my understanding from looking through this, and there's a lot of material, a lot of which is very technical, but that this is just an RFP. It doesn't financially obligate the county to anything.
Correct.
And then can you just explain a little bit to us about the process when we get the RFPs back? It looks like there's an opportunity for some interviewing. And then it will come to the commission and we can decide how to implement it from... I'm just, I'm a little, I'm looking for financial information, how this is going to be rolled out and financial information.
Yes. What's going to end up happening is that this is being released on, today, is the day that it's being released. We will have a vendor's call coming up where we'll have the opportunity to interact and to answer any questions that are out there. Barry Dunn is leading us all through those. And then you'll note that there is a date that they are due, which is March 1. We are anticipating the week of March 14th that we will be, they will be notified the week of March 14th of vendor demonstrations, the week of April 4th and April 11th. At that point, there'll probably be a few more discussions, a few more conversations, a few more meetings as we make a recommendation to move forward. At that point, we will bring this back to the commission. Hopefully, we'll have solid dollars at that particular time. And then you will be able to make discussion, you'll be able to have discussion and make a decision as to how we're going to go through and pay for it, which may include different options, including, do we look at doing an accumulation fund between now and then is one option to go through and do. Bonding or opt-out are different ways that we'll go through and pay for it, or a combination of different ways.
Any additional questions? Commissioner Barth?
Um, Carol, this is expected to be something in the seven digits, right, as far as the costs?
Yes. Yes. Our initial projections is the total project, including the RFP process, could be up to $3 million.
Any additional questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A motion and a second to authorize the publishing to bidders on software implementation services. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson in the commission office with a couple of compromise lien applications for you to consider this morning. The first one is for DPNO 20881 in the amount of $1,984.43. In this case, the applicant approached the commission office last week inquiring about a county aid lien that's in the name of her ex-husband. Again, the amount, $1,984.43. The applicant is not named on this lien and the couple was not married at any time when any of the liens were incurred that are in the name of the ex-husband. The applicant is preparing to close on the refinance of her home here in Sioux Falls. And this lien was identified by the title company as they were doing their work in preparation for closing. Closing is scheduled for this Friday. Speaking with the title company, the reason they were connecting this lien to this individual is that at the time, the mortgage, this mortgage was taken out, both the applicant and her ex-husband applied for the mortgage. And so they were originally on that. The ex-husband has since executed a quitclaim deed, is no longer on the property. But they are seeing that at the time the lien, that the mortgage was incurred, both of them had a stake in the property. And at that point, he also had, had active liens at that point. So that is the position from the title company of why this was flagged in her process of moving forward to attempt to close on this refinance. So the, the action that we are bringing forward to you for your consideration today is a, let me just, I want to find my notes here, that you would compromise and release the lien in full only as it applies to the property listed in this case. And it would remain in place for the full amount for the individual named on the lien.
Are there any questions for Robert on this? Commissioner Barth?
This may be more for our state's attorney, but assuming that I have a pre-existing debt when I get married, doesn't, doesn't that follow me into that deal?
It, it does. I mean, my opinion is there's, there's two bases for this. There's the, the marriage and the duty to support. That does attach arguably as a legal matter to this. But also, I think this is even more unique in that, or maybe not unique, but the connection is even greater here because there was a binding document executed by the ex-husband during, during the course of the marriage on this while he did have those outstanding liens. I think, I think the attachment of the liens is legally valid to this. It's whether you as a commission under your compromise power decide that it's equitable to hold her responsible for those liens that did all pre-exist the, the marriage. So...
Any other questions?
I don't really know how to ask this, but was he living in the home or were they living together? These liens were incurred, one was '86, but they were as late as '98, I think. Is that right? I'm just curious, you know, and maybe it's, maybe it's not a question I can ask, but what the arrangements were. Because they're claiming that the liens were placed before, before they were married.
In, in...
Today's world, sometimes that doesn't mean anything.
In reviewing the lien summary sheet, that is our, our first step every time we're looking through one of these, which lists the date that a lien was incurred and a broad category of what it was incurred for. There was a large gap of time, about 12 or 13 years, and that sheet is included for your review, during which there were no liens incurred. All of the liens were incurred before that and after that. They were married during the point of that, that gap. And then within that same time period, in the middle of that, they also jointly, while they were married, applied for the mortgage and were, for a time, both, both married and both listed on the, on the mortgage.
Okay, but am I reading this correctly, that there was a lien in '98, there was a lien in '98, there was a lien in 2000? And they were married in 2001, is that, if I remember correctly?
Correct. We've got, yeah, we have, have liens incurred in '98, '95, '92, '88, '87. And then again in 14, one, one more in, in 14.
Thank you.
Is the applicant present? I do not see the applicant. Is there a motion or more conversation?
Madam Chair, I certainly can understand the situation and the sudden need to get this done. Did the, I guess I have another question. Did the title company drop the ball on this earlier? Or is this, I mean, how did, how did those liens that came about after they were divorced wind up being attached to this property? I guess I'm asking a confusing question.
As a, as a purchase was preparing to close and closed in 2007, there may indeed have been some title work. If, if something was found there, I can't speak to that. And if not, I certainly can't speak to why action may or may not have been taken at that point. Again, that would, that would entirely be a function of a, of a title company who was reviewing records at that time.
So the, the liens were all incurred before the marriage and then there's one after the marriage, after they're, after they were divorced for some time, so...
Madam Chair, my, my perspective is I don't mind the idea of taking the one after the marriage off. But, you know, if, if going into that contract, one party had a serious debt, rolled it into their mortgage or whatever, and it seems to me there's an obligation when you're married on that kind of a deal.
Well...
Commissioner Kelly?
The other question I have is how were the, how were the liens not found when they got the mortgage? Is that? I mean, maybe this is the title company's problem.
It's a, it's a valid question and we're just simply getting into actions that are, that are taken and reviews that are, that are initiated, that are outside our control, that we don't participate in.
Okay. I just, as a comment, I wonder if maybe if we denied the lien or denied the relief, the petitioner would have a clause against the title company.
Depends what happened. I have, I have no idea. Based on the record before us, I couldn't tell you that at all. I, and I do want to clarify if I may, as a legal matter, as Commissioner Barth mentioned, the one after the dissolution of the marriage, I would agree as a legal matter, there's no legal hook on enforcing that against the ex-wife, so, or the applicant. So I do agree on that one, the 400...
Yeah, it was 400...
$435.
Correct.
And so Cindy, did you come up with the totals at 154943? Did you, did you subtract that out?
Oh, yes. And then I divided it in half in case they wanted to compromise.
What was the total first? Was it 154943? Sorry.
154943.
Okay. That would be, that would be the part that, that would be incurred before the marriage that was attached with the mortgage. But you'd have to compromise at least that bottom part and then what do you want to do with the rest, so...
I just worry that the quitclaim thing is just too easy a way to, to get rid of these debts. Looking for other input to...
Other comments?
Commissioner Hybarger, I mean, I would agree. And I guess I would make a motion to relieve the property of the $435 lien and, and leave the remaining amount on the property.
Okay.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to release the, the last lien for $435, but to leave the remaining 1549, 15, 1549 and 43 cents against the property, and that would still stand. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Item number B.
Commissioners, we have one more. Lien application for your consideration today. The commission office received a compromise lien application from an applicant for DPNO 87578 in the amount of $131. This lien was incurred for court-appointed attorney costs. And I will note that I've been working with the state's attorney's office to identify exactly what these charges were incurred for, what this attorney services was incurred for. And they have no record of a criminal file involving this defendant. So again, in working with Sarah Cho, not sure if this would have been a juvenile matter or, or some other case. But we would, have looked into trying to identify exactly why this, this court-appointed attorney fee was incurred and have not, to this point, been, been successful in, in making that determination. The applicant in this case requests a compromise on the release of the lien in full with no additional payment. And there is no real estate transaction involved here. This individual, the applicant, first visited the commission office several weeks ago and asked for a compromise based on his extremely limited income. At that point, the original lien amount was $261. He had repaid $80 to that point. He relayed that he just had a strong aversion to having a debt out there. He had a very limited income and ability to pay, but he was, was asking for a compromise at that point. I told the applicant that I would be happy to process the application at that point, but he may wish to consider additional payment to at least make a payment of at least 50% of the original lien balance. And then several weeks later, he came back after making a payment and that got up to within a dollar of that 50% mark, and again asked to process the, the compromise lien application. So that is, that is what I've got to present to you. The, the applicant lists a 2014 income of just under $8,000, has resources and, and assets that total under $1,000, including a 12-year-old car and a checking account with a very small balance in it. And again, has just made the, the statement a number of times that has a very limited income and does not wish to owe any money at, at this point. And made the payments he has made in hopes that the remaining amount will be compromised.
Is the applicant here? No. Comments from the commission? Commissioner Kelly?
I'm, I'm not, I don't have a big problem with this thing, except I'm concerned that, and I'd like to find out before we vote, what that court-appointed attorney was. If this is a civil matter and they appointed, that's not our, we do not do civil. And I guess, I think we, we could defer this for a week and find out what that court, you know, obviously it wasn't a criminal matter because it's not in the state's attorney's office. Am I correct?
And, and there is a record for someone with a different middle name, but the address and things don't appear to match. I would recommend that if you want to consider this, and maybe this addresses Commissioner Kelly's concerns, had it be deferred for one week so we can look into this a little more. What I'd like to do is to pull the auditor's office records to see if there's any sort of more voucher, at least like a file number or something like that, to make, maybe can point us in the right direction. Because I, I, I mean, that would be fine, so...
I'd make that motion to defer for one week.
A motion to defer for one week? A motion and a second. There any comments on it?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
I, well, I just, I don't believe I will support this whenever it comes up. I think that this debt is small enough. We don't charge interest. There, at less than $8,000 in income, there's no question that this person is dependent on government assistance to survive one way or the other. And I, I just don't see any reason for us to give up whatever opportunity we have to recoup some of those costs.
Additional comments?
I would like to say I concur with Commissioner Barth on this. I haven't heard that this is not an able-bodied person. They have a job. They've been paying. We don't care if you pay us $2 a month. We don't care if we pay us $25 a year. It's a small amount. There is no interest. And we did provide the services. With that being said, if the commission feels that they want to defer for one week, I'm fine with that. But I don't think I will be supporting this unless something else comes to light.
I do have one other question for Kirsten. Kirsten, isn't it true that we do provide legal assistance in some civil cases where, say a divorce, where someone might go to jail?
Those would be not related to the divorce directly. There are some instances where it might be a civil case heading, that it be child support or things like that, where a penalty could be deprivation of liberty. That's the determining factor as to whether someone is eligible.
Okay. But there are cases where, yes, where liberty is at risk.
Correct.
That we may have to provide an attorney.
Sure.
Any other comments?
Commissioner Hybarger, just to your point, I would, I would certainly say that in my conversations with the applicant, certainly stress the fact that, that payments of any amount would be gladly accepted and he could go on for any amount of time and make payments in as small amount as he was, was able to do. So that was, that was certainly communicated to the applicant.
I have a motion and a second to defer one week for further information. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no, yes, whatever. Sorry. A motion passes three to two to defer for one week. Next, we will move on to opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak about something that is not on the agenda? Good morning, DJ.
Morning, Commissioners. DJ Booth, the highway superintendent. I just wanted to take this opportunity to introduce to you our new engineering specialist, Melissa Schmidt. She's sitting over there and she joined our team a couple of weeks ago and already started working on putting out projects for us. So just wanted to come and introduce her to you guys.
Welcome. Did you have anything you wanted to say, Melissa? Will she be up here presenting in, in her capacity at all?
She probably won't be presenting, definitely not on a regular basis. She might be from here for meetings from time to time, maybe to answer some questions or something.
All right. Thank you. Nice to meet you. Thanks for coming. Any other opportunity in a public comment? With that, we will go on to regular business. We have item number 10 is a public hearing to consider a motion and declare property legally described as Lot 4, Block 2, Corson Falk's addition 102-48, Brandon Township as a public nuisance and enact South Dakota certified law 21-10-6. Kevin Hookman, good morning.
Morning. Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. As you just heard, that this is a, to hear a public nuisance case and that it was legally described. The site is located at 26009 482nd Avenue and it's approximately the center of Corson, site map here. The staff is originally notified of, of this property having junk and debris and stuff on this property in July 9th of 2014. We looked at the, the site and visited. We found a couple of unlicensed cars, lawn mowers in various conditions, some 55-gallon steel drums and other junk on the property. We sent letters to the property owner and with no direct response, and then through various other site visits, we discussed with the property owner what needs to be done and what can be done on the property to comply with the ordinance. At one point in the spring of 2015, the property owner did improve the property and cleaned up much of the front yard, although there was still items of scattered... there was still items of, um, scattered throughout the property in general. His staff, uh, prolonged the deadline for that, uh, so that he can have more time to clean up, and since then, there's been little or no change in, uh, the property maintenance. The, on January fourth, two thousand and sixteen, uh, staff sent certified mail for a notice of this public hearing. On Friday, that would be the twenty-second, I did visit the property again, and I left a note, uh, the same public notice, and that was received, uh, because the property owner is here and he'll be able to speak. The property has a history of public nuisance violations. The most recent case was declared a public nuisance by this body in two thousand and eleven, and was cleaned up in that summer. The... The Minnehaw County, uh, nuisance ordinance, uh, reads that any abandoned property is part of the pub- public nuisance. Any deteriorated, wrecked, dismantled, derel- derelict, or inoperable property in unusable condition in its present state, and which has been left outside of an enclosed permanent structure without being so restricted, this shall include deteriorated, wrecked, inoperative, dismantled, or partially dismantled, or unlicensed motor vehicles, dilapidated or unregistered mobile homes, trailers, boats, machinery, refrigerators, washing machines, or other appliances, plumbing fixtures, furniture, automotive parts, waste building materials, junk, and any other similar articles in such condition. And I will go through some of the PowerPoint slides, uh, some selected pictures from, uh, visiting the site. Uh, this is in August, in the front yard. Side yard. Uh, side yard from a different view, and this is the rear driveway. You can see the barrels there and tires. And that's an unlicensed car. Uh, this would be September. Uh, there was some cleanup, um, of the side yard, but most of it moved back further off the pro- off, away from the property line and back behind, by the accessory building. November, little change. Uh, this would be May of two thousand and fifteen, you can see that that fence was built, and much of the miscellaneous items on the ground were picked up, and, uh, that's where the staff gave the petitioner, or the property owner, extra time to clean up the property. Um, this is what would the backyard look at that time. Later that summer. And then, let's see, this fall. And this fall, there was the addition of this tractor, um, and some parts for the tractor, loader parts. Uh, staff has worked with this property owner and has found that, uh, there's been a, a general lack of cleaning up over the, over the past year, uh, of notices. And so staff feels that declaring this public nuisance is the best way to move forward. Uh, and by declaring it a public nuisance, you'd be acting South Dakota codified law twenty-one ten six, which allows the county to declare a public nuisance, to allow the county to clean up the property and defray the costs to the property owner. So any questions?
So any questions for Kevin at this point?
Kevin, um, has there been liens attached to the property because of previous cleanup that we've done?
The, in the two thousand and eleven cleanup, uh, there was costs that were a special assess to the property, uh, and I looked at the records with the, um, treasurer's office, and it, from my understanding, those liens were paid, uh, and nothing since then.
So the, the taxes are probably current then, and?
The taxes are not current.
They're not?
No. But I, from my understanding, the, that original lien was paid from the last, um...
Can you tell us how big that was?
Oh, I, it was, I believe it was approximately two thousand dollars. It was fairly large.
Thank you.
Um, the applicant is here. Would you like to speak? You do not have to come up to the microphone, you can sit where you are, stand where you are, you don't have to say your name, however you want to handle it, you just have to s- Oh, he does have to come up, yep, you do have to come up and identify yourself, sorry. You'd have to come up and identify yourself.
I'm Lonny Banghart, and I live at that property, and I live there, you know? The kids are there, the grandkids are there. During the summer, we'd ride the mowers around and the other riding toys and stuff. And the address on that property is not Brandon. We keep sending mail to Brandon. It's Corson, South Dakota.
Are there any questions?
Um, yeah.
If you might want to come back, we might have a couple of questions for you.
Have you been getting the mail or not?
Yeah, sometimes I get it, sometimes I don't. That's one of my pet peeves, is people send me mail that's listed to Brandon, and I live in Corson.
So have you responded to those that you've gotten?
Some of them, some of them not.
Why, uh... Why do you feel you don't have to respond to it?
The, the, you're the county, you should know where I live. You should put the right address on the envelope and mail it.
Well, I don't know, I'm assuming that's what's on the tax deed, or the tax. Is that right, Scott? Okay, I, I hear a nod from, that that's, when we look up the records, it's whatever the tax address is.
Corson, South Dakota. Here, you want a state deal from the license plates I got yesterday? Corson, South Dakota.
This picture is from two thousand and fourteen. Um, would you say it's an accurate representation of what's there today?
Pretty close. No, not, no, it's not. It's not accurate.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
Sir, do you understand why your neighbors might complain about the status of your property?
Yep.
So what can we do about it?
Put up a fence, I guess, you know? The kids... Is anything on the property, if I put it in the garage, is anything illegal to have on the property?
I don't think so, I'm...
So why is it illegal if I have it outside?
I think if it's inoperable, if it's, uh, unlicensed, if it's deteriorated, if it's leaking, uh, oil or other chemicals into the ground.
What is leaking oil, you know? Most of my stuff is operable, except the lawn mowers, you know, and I take them apart and put them together for the kids to ride. As far as oil drums, are you allowed to have a burn barrel in Corson?
I would think so.
You're allowed a burn barrel. That's the big kicker, everybody complains about the burn barrel, well, there's burn barrels all around town if you look. And I live right across the street from a feedlot, you know? You always complain, "Well, you got mice or something." Well, yeah, they come from across the street.
You don't think there's any, like, mosquitoes or anything living in those tires, or?
Most of the tires have.
I drove past the property this last week, and it's, was a lot, from what I could see from the road, a lot cleaner than what appears on this picture. It did not seem to be a nice, or from this highway.
Is the outbuilding filled?
Yeah, I have stuff in it, but I can get stuff into it, you know? I can put all lawn mowers and everything in there, but then I, then I don't have any room in there.
Well, I, I don't understand, I mean, I, I, I think your neighbors have got a legitimate gripe, uh, it's in violation of the county ordinances, I don't understand why you don't make an effort to put all that stuff in the garage or get rid of it.
Well, I do get rid of a lot of it, you know, I just, if it's good, then I keep it, if it's not, I get rid of it, you know?
There's no questions? I will note that there, that, there's only one picture from November, the rest of these pictures are from two thousand and fourteen and early two thousand and fifteen. He has put up one fence, but that picture's dated from May, so...
Commissioner Hyburger, I believe there are at least three pictures from November. Um, I have three pictures, one of the front yard, one of kind of the back and the side, and then one directly behind the rear building.
Yep, I see that.
Quite a, quite a bit of property... Sitting outside.
Additional questions?
Madam Chair, I'm, I've asked, uh, the auditor, uh, the recorder to, uh, figure the total amount of tax that's currently arrears.
Okay.
And that's not interest and penalty.
Yeah, the, so that number is twenty, twenty-three?
Almost twenty-four thousand, or two thousand four hundred.
Two, just under two thousand four hundred dollars is currently in arrears.
Were you aware of that?
Yep.
Okay. Is that just last year's taxes? Cindy, do you know?
That goes back to two thousand and twelve.
Two thousand and twelve, okay.
I have a question, Kevin, if he's done. I have a question, Kevin, if, if...
Yeah, go ahead. Oh, Kevin, thank you.
Yes?
Kevin, you said you were out there Friday?
Yes, I was out there on Friday.
Uh, give us, uh, what you saw.
And so on Friday, um, everything's covered in the snow, so it's difficult. What I, I just basically took a picture from the front yard, and I knocked on the door and I left the letter. Um, I, I did compile a list of, of items from the pictures from October and, and November. I went through those and found kind of a list of items that are on the property. And in October and November, I, I, there is two unlicensed cars, five tires, three tire rims, ten riding lawn mowers, four snow blowers, one tractor with loading arms and bucket, two sm- snow pushing blades, one RV camper which is licensed, two snowmobiles, one paddle boat, uh, two children-sized vehicles or toys, one push mower, one wood chipper, and one air compressor, and that's, and then various other, um, items such as, uh, construction items like a door and plywood, five gallon buckets, parts for lawn mowers and cars, wood pallets, that sort of thing. So, that would be kind of a list of things that's on the property.
A question.
Okay, additional questions?
Uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to ask, uh, Mr. Banghart.
Okay.
Another question. Sir, is there, can you make us any, any offer as to what you might do to help, uh, solve our concern here and placate your neighbors and, and make our staff feel better about progress on your property?
Yeah, I can put it inside, I want to put up a fence, but I didn't have time this summer.
Could you move some of the stuff inside when it, the weather warms up? I'm sure it'd be hard with the snow, and then work on that fence this year?
Yep.
I don't want to throw your property away, um, but it does make it a difficult situation for us, too. Is, do you need assistance in, in putting up a fence?
No, that load tractor and loader's put together, I, I use that tractor to move snow, so...
I don't think it's against county ordinance to have a tractor, so the tractor's not...
It's what?
It's not against the county ordinance to have a tractor, so it's not an issue.
Okay.
Tractor's not an issue.
The fence I can put up six foot on the sides, right? He, he come out and looked at the one in the front, and he says it's too high.
Kevin, you want to answer that, please?
So, the county ordinance allows six-foot tall fence in the back and the rear, uh, yards. Uh, the ones in the front has to be four feet or, or lower. Um, so, yeah, that's anything in front of the, the house.
Okay. So can, starting at the edge of his house, can you do six foot?
Yep.
Starting at the edge of your house, he can have a six-foot fence?
Let's see if I can put a map on. So, starting at this corner to the side yard, he can put a six-foot fi- tall fence all the way back.
Okay. All right, any additional questions or comments?
Mr. Banghart, uh, can you give us an idea when you would, uh, get that fence going, or when you would, uh, because...
Probably spring, I can put a lot of the stuff in the garage, you know?
That would be helpful. Um, you know, we've had some trouble communicating with you, and, you know, whatever your address is, leaving notes on your door and stuff, we're not getting any response from you, and...
Send it to the right address.
Is your front door good enough?
Yeah.
Okay, well, so when someone comes, please interact with them, and let's get this thing moving. I'm, I'm, I'm willing to give some additional time to the spring here, but this has to stop, this has to be cleaned up. We can't have rodents and mosquitoes and, and, uh, chemicals being spilled, we, it's got to be cleaned up, do you understand that?
Yes.
Okay.
I come home in the wintertime, and it's cold, and they got snow outside, and there's mice coming across the road.
It hasn't been that way for five years, though.
It has.
Really? There's been snow for five years?
Oh, every year there's snow in the winter.
Oh, yes, that's true. And then there's summer...
If mice come over, I have to put a lot of mouse poison out, I put mouse poison out all over. I've had them come try to chew their way into my porch.
Okay, we don't need to talk about mice anymore.
Yeah, that's all right.
Are there any more, um, questions or comments or action?
I'd make a motion to give him ninety days to get this cleaned up to the satisfaction of the ordinance.
I'll second that.
Ninety days?
And I think at that point, I think you have to understand that, at least in my case, I will, uh, ask for vigorous enforcement if we have not seen some progress. Your neighbors do not deserve to have that. And they have rights, just as you do, and, and I, I think that you need to, you need to, uh, get this stuff inside or get rid of it, and comply with what standards are in Corson.
Any additional comments? I would suggest that that be a little bit longer than ninety days, because ninety days makes it the middle of April, and we could still have ice and snow at that point, and if those vehicles are frozen to the ground, you're not going to get them off.
Well, if that's the case, we can take action in ninety days, but I think, I, I think ninety days is, takes them to, uh, almost the end of April and that's spring.
Additional comments? Commissioner Benega?
Well, I would agree that we've, uh, probably bent over backwards to come to some conclusions that we both can live with, and frankly, this has affected not only your, uh, property values, but it affects your neighbor's property values, and, uh, it affects public health. So, uh, I think, uh, that timeframe is enough to get this thing settled, and if it's not, then I think we need to take this into our own hands, and that is expensive. So, it's, uh, your best interest to get this settled and taken care of before that time period, because if you come back again, I don't think you'll have any leeway to make any other, uh, uh, action taken.
So the motion and a second to defer for ninety days, does that ninety days mean progress? You're not expecting the fence up in ninety days, you're expecting progress on the clean up and bring the stuff?
I'm expecting the property to be cleaned up in ninety days.
Okay. A motion and a second, any other comments? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same signed motion passes unanimously of ninety days. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eleven is consider recommendations to appoint Delmar Crone to a through, three-year term on the Sulan Heritage Museum Board of Director effective February fourth, two thousand and sixteen. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning, Bill Hoskins, Director of the Sulan Heritage Museums. Um, we're requesting the appointment of Del, Delmar Crone, uh, to the museum board for a three-year term. He would be replacing, uh, Marty DeWitt, who completed his second, uh, three-year term and is not eligible for reappointment. Uh, this position with Robert's assistance was advertised for, uh, a little over six weeks. Uh, Del's is the only application that we've received for that position.
Is there any questions?
We'll move approval of, uh, Mr. Crone to a three-year term.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, additional comments?
I have, I have a question, though. You've got a lot of volunteers and stuff working there, I, I'm surprised that none of them have a desire to be on the, uh...
What?
Board, uh, to...
Well, um, a, a number of them have cycled on, and in fact, Mr. Crone has served as a citizen member of the museum board's endowment advisory committee in the past, and, and has some, uh, familiarity with the museum, and I think that's in part why he, he applied.
Uh, my, my question's not against...
No, no, I, I, I know, but, but we've...
My question is why aren't there more applicants?
Well, I'm not, I, I'm not sure at this point in time. Well, I'm not, I'm not sure at this point in time. We've got a, we also have the Museum Alliance Board, which is our private nonprofit friends group, which has a number of different volunteer members on that board. I, I'm not sure, Dick. I've, I've got two city vacancies at the moment. I'm waiting on two, and, and in part, that's one reason I'm pushing a little on this, just so I can ensure to have a quorum for meetings.
Well, I have a motion and a second for this appointment. Are there any other comments?
Bill, I'm assuming, I'm sorry. Bill, I'm assuming you've advertised these openings and that it's an ongoing process?
Yes. It was, it, Robert helped with the advertisements, and it was about six or seven weeks. We, we, we had one other inquiry a number of weeks ago. Talked to the gentleman quite a bit about different board options, because I have vacancies on the city side as well. And so, but, but I have not heard back from him at this point. Really, I'm kind of looking for board members year-round, because every year there's a couple openings.
Any other comments or questions? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Bill. Item number twelve is authorize the chairman to sign the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen maintenance agreement between Minnehaha County and World, in New World, in the amount of three hundred nine thousand seven hundred thirty dollars. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Monty Wattenbach, Minnehaha County, IT Department. What we have for you is just a maintenance agreement with New World. Their name's actually in the process of being changed to Tyler Technologies since they were acquired. But Minnehaha County holds that maintenance agreement with them. And as you may know, many agencies use that software solution, including Metro Communications, the city of Sioux Falls, police and fire. So, we've all been in communication and planning ahead. We would like to have you sign this agreement for maintenance to carry us through March of two thousand eighteen. A majority of this cost is paid for by the city. A little bit more than half is paid for by the city and Metro Communications. The remainder is between the sheriff's office, the jail, and, and a few others. Any questions?
Commissioner Bender?
So, Monty, the three hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars amount, is that the county's portion, or is that the total?
That's the total portion that all of the agencies combined pay for. But since the contract is through us, we signed the contract, but we actually bill out the city of Sioux Falls and Metro Communications are the main.
Additional questions? Is there a motion?
So, move. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number thirteen is authorize the chairman to sign the professional services agreement between the county and Dakota Cemetery Management in the amount of five thousand dollars per year for cemetery administration. DJ, good morning again.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Boothey, Highway Superintendent. A little bit of a brief history regarding this agenda item. As you know, the county owns and operates a property immediately adjacent to the Highway Department property. That is known as the Minnehaha County Cemetery. The history of burials at the cemetery goes back to the eighteen nineties, and we have an interesting book, if any of you are ever in our office and want to take a look at it, that shows some of those burials, the records of the burials. It's, it's kind of interesting to look at. It used to be known as a county porch farm, which was operated just east of, of that site. Human Services Department today, they conduct an investigation when there's a death, and they determine the eligibility for burial rights in this cemetery. I'm not really familiar with that ordinance. I think there's an ordinance regarding the eligibility rights. But they conduct an investigation, and they let us know if there is, if there is a, a person that is eligible to be buried there. Then we're typically contacted by a funeral home and coordinate the administrative, administrative services of, of conducting a burial on the site. The Highway Department is part of those administrative services. We will facilitate the opening and the closing of the grave. We'll fill out proper paperwork for the burial record to be sent to the register of deeds. We'll have the permanent retention of the list of the burials at the cemetery for the life of the cemetery. Then we'll coordinate monument placement when requested. We also do the surveying and the plating and the mowing, the debris cleanup, and the security of the, the site itself. While there has been no previously set guidelines on how to operate the cemetery, we have become aware of an entire chapter in the South Dakota codified law regarding cemeteries and burial records. And so, when we became aware of this, we started to look in closer on how we could, how we should be managing this and realized maybe we're not the best people as, as highway and transportation officials. We're probably not the best people of it to be administering a county cemetery. And so, we started having meetings with Human Services Office and the Commission Office and just coordinating between the departments on, on maybe what the best way to, to move forward with the cemetery is. And so, after much discussion, we determined that probably neither the county highway department nor the Human Services Department is the best candidate to oversee the administrative function of the cemetery. And, and so, we decided to solicit a proposal from Dakota Cemetery Management for the administrative function of the cemetery itself. In that, in that proposal, in the proposed contract that we've negotiated with them, Human Services still does their investigation, and then they notify Dakota Cemetery Management of a burial, and then Dakota Cemetery Management works through all of the administrative function, notifies the county highway department that there will be a burial, and we, we open a gravesite that's eligible for them. And then, and then they conduct the, the burial and coordinate that with a funeral home, and then the highway department closes the site. Highway Department still continues to do the, the mowing, the snow removal, and the site maintenance that's required. When we have a little bit of time to do some more administrative work, we're going to work to see if maybe the jail or the penitentiary has some staff available to help out with some of the, the day-to-day maintenance-type stuff, mowing and, and that kind of thing. But right now, we're proposing to keep that as, as a highway function. And so, we have before you today a proposed contract that we've negotiated. There's a five thousand dollar annual lump sum fee that is proposed to be paid out biannually, and that includes, well, the, the fee includes all work for the administrative portion of the cemetery administration. So, if you have any questions, if I didn't explain anything that you wanted to hear about, I can try to answer those questions. Kerry is also here from Human Services and can answer some questions, too.
There are questions for DJ or Kerry. Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions. DJ, how many years do we inter in this property?
The, over the last several years, we've averaged between six and maybe ten. It seems like we're, we're getting a little bit more and more every year, but at the most, maybe ten.
Do we cremate any of them?
About half the burials today are cremations.
Do we know where everyone is placed?
We do, we do have official record, yes. We, and, and I don't know, maybe you're leading me into something here. There's, yeah, that'd be a first, Gerald. Like I said, the, the cemetery started in the eighteen nineties, and so we have records going back that far. I don't know if it's hearsay or, or what, but there's rumored to be maybe some placement of some bodies outside of the cemetery itself, or maybe just with the, the mapping of the, the older part of the cemetery not being true and correct, because maybe it wasn't surveyed. We don't know for sure. We don't have any proof, but we're very cautious when we're doing any kind of digging in that area, because we don't really know if the records that we have are a hundred percent accurate.
Commissioner Kelly?
Now, do I understand that you're going to continue to maintain the property, plus you will open and close the graves?
Right.
But you won't even know about it until they call you and tell you to, to open a grave for them?
That's right. And in the contract, there's a provision on the time, timing of how that actually works. We're given a notice period, and then we have a certain amount of time to open up the, the gravesite.
And I believe the funding is coming out of Kerry's budget and not out of the highway budget. It's coming out of Human Services budget.
I believe that's correct, yes.
Any additional questions for DJ or for Human Services?
I'll make a motion to, to approve the contract.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve that agreement between Minnehaha County and Dakota Cemetery's management. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, DJ.
Thank you. I do want to add one more point I think I should have mentioned, and I, and I forgot to. The way that this contract is structured, it ends at the end of the year, and it will be up for renewal negotiations at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number fourteen is consider the auditor's request to cancel January seventeenth and November eighth, two thousand sixteen county commission meetings to accommodate election day activities in the commission meeting room.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Lutz from the Auditor's Office. A moment of personal privilege, if I may, Madam Chair. I wanted to compliment Mr. Boothey and his hiring practices involving diversity, in which it's typically a male-dominated field. And I think it speaks highly of our hiring practices and evens the numbers out a little bit. So, congratulations, Mr. Boothey, and your new employee. Reason I'm here today is the twenty sixteen election cycle, we're going to have three elections. The city school election is April twelfth with a possible runoff on May third. We don't know. We'll have to assess that as we get a little bit closer to find out about that third. But the two that I'm concerned about are the primary election on June seventh and the general election on November eighth. They're going to require a little bit of the, the use of public space here that day, both of those days. And what I would like to reserve is this commission room, the room next door, and then I'm actually going to be spilling out into the hallway, because after these offices were built back here, we pulled the tape on it and started figuring out tables and space and all that, and I'm a little bit shorter over here. So, we would, we would also be working out in this hallway. It wouldn't be closed down, but we would definitely be working out there. And I think that, you know, if we could get these, the commission meetings postponed a week, that the traffic that is normally generated from those would be greatly subsided and assist with that. So, what I'm asking is, is to reserve these spaces and defer the commission meetings on those days till the next week. And that's, that's it. So, I'm open for any questions here.
Any questions for Bob?
Madam Chair, it's not a question, but I wonder if, you know, certainly we could cancel the meetings for those days, but it may be necessary for us to meet on Wednesday or something that week, or Monday to take care of something. So, I think canceling them is one thing, but planning on deferring any action till the next week is premature at this point.
At least it gives us an opportunity to make sure we don't plan any planning and zoning issues on those particular days, and we'll just deal with the rest of it as it comes along. So, any other questions for Bob? Is there a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number fifteen is consider a motion to transfer interest earnings of eleven thousand sixty-five dollars and sixty-six accumulations in the highway fund to the general fund. Bob Lutz?
Every year this comes up here due to the shifting tides of fortune with the highway funds. They do accumulate some interest, and it is up to the commission as to whether you want this money to go into the general fund or stay in the highway fund. And if you want to stay in the highway fund, you don't have to do anything, but if you want to move it to the general fund, it will take a motion.
Are there any comments on this? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I would support putting it into the general fund. I think our highway funds are so restricted that, that we have little we can do with them, and I think our needs are much greater on the general fund side of this thing, so I would, and I'll make a motion if nobody else has a comment.
Is there a second to that motion? We have a comment.
I've lost this argument for five years in a row, so I'm going to do one more try. I believe that those should be designated funds. They came for the purpose of the highway fund. They should be used for the highway fund, and they ought to stay in the highway fund. End of discussion.
Yeah, we did, we won last year.
Oh, I forgot.
And, and I will, I, I will echo that. We also had a very hard fight last year in the legislature to fund our highway department, and I think we are regressing backwards if we take the, the interest that we have earned on those additional funds and put it into the general fund. We have a significant issue in our general fund, but that is for the legislators to figure out, and I don't think we should be transferring the interest, so.
I have a motion.
There is a motion on the table to-
I'll second it.
You have a motion and a second to transfer, to transfer the money to, money to the general fund. I have a motion, and that was your second?
Yeah.
Okay, is there any additional comments? Okay, better have a roll call vote.
Aye.
Bender?
No.
Benega?
No.
Kelly?
Aye.
Hiebarger? No. Motion fails. Three to two. That leaves the money in the highway department.
Very good. We'll take care of that. Thank you, Commissioner.
Item number sixteen is an update and status report of the ninety-first legislative session on bills that impact Minnehaha County.
Commissioners, good morning. Robert Wilson again. The bills that I'm briefing you on are, are going to be a familiar set of bills at this point, really. We've got the, the main core bills that we've been watching that were introduced early on in the, in the process. We've had one or two additional ones, but really, the, the ones that we're tracking most closely are staying pretty, pretty much the same. We've got three bills that were essentially procedural and style and form that came out of recommendations from the summer study. Those bills, House bills one thousand two, one thousand three, and one thousand four are all moving fairly quickly through the chambers. They've passed the House of Origin and, in most, most cases, been approved by the, in one case, been approved by, on the committee level on the other House. So, those appear to be moving with very little resistance or question at all. When we get into some of the revenue bills, things are getting a, a little more interesting. We've got Senate Bill two for, with the Act revised the distribution of revenue from the alcoholic beverage fund. That was up on the Senate floor yesterday. That did, that did pass. That was amended. I think that amendment came in after I spoke with you last Tuesday, where the original bill was thirty-three percent each to the state, the counties and municipalities. That was amended to provide fifty percent of the revenue to the state, with the counties and municipalities splitting the other fifty percent, twenty-five percent each. Again, that did pass out of the, the Senate yesterday. Fairly overwhelming support. I believe there might have been five no votes on it. So, it will, will move over to the House moving forward. Potentially of, of significance. It, it will be, moving forward, considered a revenue bill and require two-thirds vote rather than a, a simple majority. That was a, a ruling as of Florida debate yesterday from the President of the Senate. So, that's, that's one wrinkle of it to, to watch moving forward. Let's see. The other fee bill that we're really watching fairly closely as far as revenue would be House Bill one oh five, and this updates a number of the fees that are charged by primarily the Treasury's office and the Sheriff's office for some of the different services they, they provide, and really provides some of that revenue to, to counties for a, a first time where it hasn't been there before. The, we've been working on, on trying to get a, a fiscal note or a, a dollar value of what this one would mean for the county, and that's proving to be somewhat of a challenging effort, be, because we're, we're looking to track some, some revenues that we just haven't had, had any in the past, and, and trying to make projections is, is a little, is a little difficult. Sergeant Gierman with the Sheriff's Office is, is here today and provided some of the information that the summer study committee that first looked at this asked for early in the year. And so, and when we're, when I'm talking, done talking with the, the other bills, he may be able to fill in a little information of, of what they're looking, what they were provided and, provided to the, the committee and, and how that may shake out. But that one's proving to be a little difficult to see exactly what it would mean, but it, it would mean some additional revenue for the county. We've got a couple of public notice bills. House bills ten sixty-six and then Senate Bill seventy-three. Ten sixty-six would lengthen the required meeting notice time that we would have to have our agenda published, where now we have to have twenty-four hours' notice published prior to a, a meeting. This would take it to two continuous days. This would take it to two continuous days in reviewing that with the state's attorney's office. The effective change there would be that we would need to have our agenda posted by 9:00 a.m. Friday, which is a little earlier than we currently have it out. Right now, it's mid-afternoon Friday, but certainly would be a manageable change that we could adapt to without too much trouble. We'll continue to watch that one. The other one that I mentioned, Senate Bill 73, an act to clarify provisions regarding open meetings, really gets into some of the finer points of what is considered an official meeting and information exchanges back and forth primarily in a teleconference setting. And again, had some initial conversations with Mr. Cap Meyer about that. But in practice, wouldn't mean much different activity than what you already do where we, you know, we don't generally have discussions going back on policy matters involving multiple commissioners. So, it's one to watch, but really would not make any real changes of what we and you do as a matter of practice. Those are that I wanted to bring to your attention. The fee bill, House Bill 105, is up on the floor for floor debate today. I'll be watching that one. The public notice bill, two days' public notice, that's on a committee hearing, House Local Government, today. And one other bill that we have watched, and I mentioned that either last week or two weeks ago, was Senate Bill 27, Act to revise certain personnel requirements for ambulance services and to repeal the hardship exemption. That was, would remove the requirement that two EMTs would be required on ambulance services doing surface transportation runs. And that is a, there was a question that came up yesterday of if that would be permissive language or something that would be more of a mandate. And if, in our case, the question was, would we be required to go with the lower standard of, and that is not the case. That all our information and what we're communicating back to our lobbyists at the state association level is that that would be permissive, that if you chose to, through your ordinance, maintain a higher standard of two EMTs on a call, you certainly would have that ability. That, I realize I'm jumping around a little bit on some of the different bills, but that's the high-level look at the main bills we're following. I would ask Sergeant Guerman if you have anything else that you wanted to say as far as your work in trying to put a number on what some of those revenue changes would be. Don't mean to put you on the hot seat, but if you have anything to add, I would certainly offer that up to you.
Are there any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Barth.
Robert, do you anticipate the need for us to go back to peer on Senate Bill Two when it goes to the House Committee? And any other bills that you expect that our attendance might be beneficial for?
It's hard to say until we see things move forward. I think the vote on the Senate floor for Senate Bill Two was certainly favorable. There was good discussion. I was encouraged that you had support coming from all regions of the state. You had people, you had senators who previously had interacted with the criminal justice system in a number of different roles. Former police chief, former judge, who have the experience of seeing the effects of alcohol on the workload of the criminal justice system, spoken in favor of it. But every time it comes to the next committee or the next floor session, it's a whole new ballgame. And we'll see as it takes each step forward.
I would encourage my fellow commissioners to reach out to some of those legislators that voted in support of Senate Bill Two, thank them for their support. And I'm thinking that a few questions that were brought up on the negative side need to be responded to by this office or by myself or someone because there were some questions that were brought up that I don't think the information was completely accurate or maybe just need some clarification in what those questions were. And I think I'll work with the staff and make sure we come up with some answers to those questions. Commissioner Kelly?
I think it's important to note that two of the five no votes came from Minnehaha County. Three of the five no votes were from appropriators of which both Minnehaha County delegates are on. This is an area that's important to Minnehaha County and I'm really disappointed that they weren't supportive of us. Obviously, with the other support we have there, it's good. The two-thirds is there. And I think it's important now that we communicate with the House and get this through. In the meantime, anybody that can talk to the governor, the governor's staff, I think we need to make that, to try and get the governor to come on board with this thing. It's only, it's fair and it's the right thing to do. We should be getting a piece of this action. I don't, I'm not going to make judgment on the other two entities, but I think it's important that we get at least, and it's about a $700,000 bonus to us, I believe, but.
With the amendment, I believe it's closer to six.
Six hundred. You know, these are thousand points of light that we've got to approach. We're not going to get a biggie. We're not going to get a sales tax. So, we need to find these little areas where we can get assistance on this public safety problem we have.
And to put it a little bit in perspective, $600,000 is not going to cover one murder trial in Minnehaha County, if I'm correct? Might? It's probably not going to cover two.
Well, it depends a lot on the tax that go forward. But suffice it to say is, we do have a lot of alcohol-fueled crime here. And, you know, that's what Senate Bill Two purports to address, so.
Additional comments or questions on the legislative session? Thanks, Robert. Item number 17 is Minnehaha County liaison reports. Are there any reports? Commissioner Barth?
Well, I was at a fire chiefs event and there are some stresses with, on the west side of Sioux Falls, with Wayne Township and fire coverage in that area where currently the city of Sioux Falls covers it. But they're increasing what they're asking for as far as annual payment from Wayne Township. And we have to face the fact that we're going to need to address the boundaries of our ambulance districts before we renew licenses this year.
And with that, Commissioner Barth and I did meet this morning with Lynda Young, Emergency Management, and have some of those preliminary discussions and asked him to bring forward some proposals in the coming future, as he looks at some of what's going on. So, Commissioner Kelly?
Jeff, Wayne Township does not have a fire department anymore.
No, they disbanded it and then contracted with the city.
And do you know how much they collect on the?
I do not.
Their revenues are from the levy?
I know that they have, I think, $400,000 in their pile. But they're, the city is raising the rate from something like $55,000 to $130,000.
But is that, I guess my question would be, is that, do they collect enough from the levy to pay the $130,000?
Don't know. And they still have responsibilities for the township roads and all that stuff, too, so.
I realize that, but the fire levy is specifically for the fire, is it not?
That's true. It certainly does not cover that kind of an amount, though. And we've been giving them that fire levy all these years.
Kim, do you know what?
We can get some of that information. I think Lynn's working on some of that stuff for us, so. Additional liaison reports? Okay. Is there any new business?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
New business. I just want to comment, maybe it's personal privilege, that one of us up here, one of us is celebrating a significant anniversary of their birth this week.
Not me.
Not me.
Kirsten?
Yep.
Happy birthday, Kirsten.
Thank you. Thursday.
It's a crooked number.
Yep. It's a crooked number, not a curved one anymore. Thanks for bringing that up.
Yep. Is there any old business?
Good morning, commissioners. I just wanted to follow back and backtrack on a question you had two weeks ago, which is regarding the mortgage on Safe Home that Minnehaha County has with that. Two weeks ago, you asked, the question is if that amount of interest could be paid down. I gave you a memo on this and I'm not going to go through the history of what, of how Safe Home was paid for, but I did reference that in there. Minnehaha County contributed $458,956 to the project in the form of a note at 6% interest. That was a cash payout that you guys did. The question was raised by Commissioner Benninga if this could be refinanced to a lower interest rate. The tax code for low-income housing tax credits has rules and regulations in place that the interest rate cannot be below market rate or there could be some negative consequences for the tax credits. In communicating with City Housing, the 6% interest rate is the amount being quoted on current deals. Given this information, refinancing would not lower the interest rates. So, and I would thank Kim Adamson because Kim really did the research on this. So, other questions I can answer for you on that. So, we do continue to pay that off faster because we cash flow Safe Home very well. And we have already, in the past four years now, have paid an additional $130,000 towards the principal. At this rate, the loan will be paid off at 2022. And obviously, if we continue to make additional payments, that would pay off even faster.
Additional questions? Additional old business? I would look for a motion to adjourn into executive session for personnel and contract negotiations.
My motion.
Second? Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Being adjourned. Motion passes unanimously.